All right, I think we're ready. Welcome again to council members that are participating remotely and again, thank you to all those that are here in chamber with us. Ms. Clump is joining us on our screen there as well as through audio as well. Ms. Clump, again, good evening and thank you and welcome. And I'll let you introduce yourself again and get us started.
Okay. Well, this is Sharon Clump with Baker Killian, and I am working with the City Council and the City Manager's Church, and I have the opportunity over the past week to meet virtually with a number of council members. I've received information from that's a wealth of information on the city's strategic plan and things of that nature. So I discussed yesterday with the council president, it made some sense to provide you with some preliminary information, a check-in if you will, and if I am able to share a screen with you, I actually have put together a brief caller point to explain some of the things that are emerging from the discussion.
Yeah, I think you need to make her present.
Okay.
Okay, let's see. It'll take me a moment to pull it up, but bear, please bear with me. Okay. Can you see it? I think I just need to go to...
Yep.
Yeah, and I want to be able to just put the slide on without the border. Inside show. Okay. There we go. So if it's okay, I can just review this and separate area explain to ask if there's any feedback or comments from the members of the city council. Again, you will see this have final documents form. Right now, the idea is to make sure I'm headed on with track in putting out recruitment brochures together. So first of all, one of the things that people have told me is that the O'Clare has been receiving some accolades for being a very liberal citizen. So we want to be sure to highlight that and highlight the reasons behind the ranking. In my conversations with people, I've learned a lot about what they like about the O'Clare and what really needs to be highlighted to keep the interest of people who were having interest in the City Manager's position. So this will be more built out, but I wanted to make sure you were all aware that this would be noted someplace in the brochure. Any questions or comments for the next slide?
Council Vice President Emanuel.
Hey, thanks so much. Thank you, Ms. Clump, and good to see you. This is your chairman, Emanuel. Just a question about the accolades, I definitely understand you're going to be fleshing this out and with all due cultural respect, we have a lot of accolades and our city has received a lot of recognition. Of course, all American cities should receive this one, but just wondering if you're planning on incorporating really nice spread of the recognitions of city governors.
Yes, I need to make sure I locate them, but that absolutely needs attention. And why I asserted this slide as a presentation, we need to get the word out there while all of you are here. Thank you. So we will explain that.
Yeah, I think that was all. If you can go ahead and move to...
Okay. So, desired qualities, there are some things that keep emerging from all of the discussions. Probably the one that I like best is a passion for O'Clare because in a way it's something all about. We're looking for someone who's coming to O'Clare not for a job, but to really, you know, actively become a part of it, create, make the community better, establish partnerships, all those great things. So that's one of the important qualities. Visionary leadership has been important for somebody who's strategic. Collaborative leadership, and this is somebody who's connecting with all segments of the community, and I heard that repeatedly. Sometimes we see people in community leadership positions and it's not necessarily being replenished or added to with others in the community. So this notion of all segments is very important, and I think to underscore collaborative leadership, it means the ability to share power with others and to kind of work in that way for One comment that was interesting was to use that the collective expertise of the senior management team, no one does this job alone. So I think being able to set forth some expectations about one, working very effectively with and collectively with two. Embraces inclusivity and diversity, that's a huge thing and gets resound in all of the material that you've provided. So we will be highlighting that and maybe moving that up in the list, but it's very important and seems to need to be a part of the fabric of the business. We need someone who can set clear expectations and maintain the accountability of others. So there's this sense that you can get things done, you know that what you're supposed to do, you know what you're going to get done. You will be held accountable. Compassionate, the work that came up. Respective to new ideas and create a solution, this is another one. That was mentioned pretty closely. People talk about, let's get new ideas and let's listen to things, let's not get tied up and we've always done it this way. Strong listening, making sure that people, whether they're inside the organization or department, you can be, or their city or council, are heard, communicate effectively to a variety of audience groups. Again, this means really getting out there with all the audiences, being able to speak to people in many different clubs. So when he's energetic, has a positive, can-do attitude. Someone who has experience navigating the political environment without being political. Someone who builds credibility and trust, someone who's emotionally intelligent and self-aware. So this list may change a little bit if I continue to go through and we find these ideas, but is there anything, nothing or anything that you would like expanded upon in the brochure?
Councilmember Beaton.
Yeah, I just have a question. So this is the perfect vision of a human that we put together, and I suppose that you'll find it strangely hard to find somebody with as many of these qualities as you can find. How do you prioritize these or how is it, what is your process going to be for sort of reflecting which of these qualities have the weight and are also reflected in the candidates that you'll bring to us?
Well, that's a really interesting question. First of all, I think that some of these areas, just as I'm combining through it, the way this is going to be important, the passion, the visionary leadership, the collaboration, inclusivity and diversity. And there are several ways that we can get at that. Part of the screening process that we use is to have candidates respond to a candidate questionnaire. So some of these qualities will actually find their way into questions on the candidate questionnaire or possibly in the video exercise that we will ask people to respond to. There's another thing that we will be doing sometime after the recruitment brochure is finally, and that is asking each council member to complete a survey, an online survey that takes about 30 minutes to do. But once we get individual answers and we aggregate those answers, we can create a benchmark and out of that we'll understand the top competencies, the top driving forces for motivating somebody, and the top behaviors that are going to be important to respect with the City Managers. And once we have a benchmark, we are able then to have a corresponding questionnaire that the candidates will fill out and we can look at how closely they meet those targets. So that's a little bit of a side response to your question that we're going to be able to do, it's going to qualify this in the candidate questionnaire, but something that has, I think, a little bit more basis when it gets to what qualifies as the competency driving, which is the behavior. So that will come a little later in the process. I hope that answered your question. Yes, thank you.
Any other comments or questions in regards to the desired qualities in that discussion? I think we're good.
All right, well, I move to the next screen, professional capabilities. Some important things that I've learned. First of all, you all get an gold star, you're going to get a Baker Killian accolade here because I've heard the ICMA certified manager come up more in research conversation than I have ever heard it before. And because that, there were some instances in the surveys that were completed by the community and by the staff where it came out. So I was really impressed. Gold star for all of you who were aware, were competency and evaluate them. So we will be integrating those into the recruitment brochure. We won't list all of them, but as you can see, I listed some really important ones. The integrity, people talk about integrity, we talk about community engagement, inclusivity, staff effectiveness, policy facilitation and implementation, financial budgeting and management. So you see that these are really some very central four competencies that are provided through that ICMA certification, and we're going to make sure that people get that, that they work with that. And I also talked a little bit about the self-awareness, trying to be emotional intelligence, to have that kind of awareness. Other professional capabilities, engages with city councils and senior management teams. And this is really important. Engage means active. Engage is getting people involved in discussions or putting out policy options and things of that nature, that it really gets discussion going. And people talk, several different people talked about engagement with council and the management team, that was some very important. Someone who empowers employees. And one comment that I received, and this is really interesting, so it's providing clear expectations and that allows you to push down certain responsibilities and a force of accountability lower into the organization. So if it's a way of distributing the work, distributing responsibility, only people accountable, employees like it when they're able to be engaged more. So that might be an interesting capability to put forth. We talked a little bit earlier about framing issues and options to support city council policy making up part of the engagement. Another thing that comes up is encouraging, continuous improvement, ensuring efficient and effective core services. And that's always important, there's always something that can be learned in that, was something that even came during your strategic plan, so I'm comfortable seeing that listed somewhere in our recruitment brochure. And then another thing, this probably came more out of some of the staff comments, but I think anytime we're talking about growth or we're talking about the physical condition of the city, the infrastructure needs to come up because that's a huge driver for a lot of different things, whether we're talking about how we respond to housing, how we do economic development, how we create jobs, critical infrastructure, the state of it, and so on. I think that's a little bit, I want to make sure we included something about that as well. So those are professional capabilities, not too different from the desired capabilities, but worth highlighting. Any questions?
No, I don't see any.
Okay, well, I'll move on to the next one. I should have had a slide in here on leadership opportunities, and I see it's a zoom peek again. So leadership opportunities, I take great care to work on this because I think it's one of the really important things that we want to attract candidates with. So I think that we will be something, sustainability came up, belongs to physical health of the city was always a consideration. Definitely we get into some key areas impacting order of housing, homelessness, inclusivity. I mean, some of these things seem to need that it's under a heading of communities that are, and it's understanding, so being able to lift all segments of the organization and taking in charge of the strategic plan. And I want to say here, I took a look at the strategic plan, it's very succinct. It seems to correspond well to the conversations I've had with everyone. I'm sure that this is in the detail, does people work on action plans and lays the strategies forward, but it really seems to capture that very well. So I apologize for not having a leadership opportunity piece, so remembering I've tried to respond to some of the things that we've talked about. Building partnerships will be on there, but it's going to be that type of flavor as we highlight leadership opportunities. And so any questions on that, I'm sorry, it's all verbal.
Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Alston. Thank you, Ms. Clump. Yeah, I appreciate kind of taking you into the leadership arena too, and I think there's obviously overlap of professional capabilities on this slide too, but one of them that I think you mentioned was sustainability as like a value, an area of, it's that the need of leadership from the very top of this organization. Obviously, we have staff that are maybe in the expert category on that, but we truly need leadership on the environmental sustainability piece and climate action. So you feel that fits pretty well with the leadership category that you're talking about?
Yes, I do, and I say that because sustainability is a thing that is mentioned by a number of people. It's kind of that forward-looking, anticipating what will be happening. So I think that, yeah, I think sustainability is good, and I think of it in very broad terms, it's the climate change and all the things that come together with that. I think that sustainability can also mean financial sustainability and budget structure well so that you don't have an imbalance between marketing and expenditure. But I will cast that very broadly. I think it's an important issue to put out there for worthy candidates.
I don't see any other questions.
I know there were some questions about the job description, and I did take an opportunity to review it. I think it's very comprehensive. There was nothing that I thought I felt needed to be changed. It had the breadth to work within the government framework. It strongly talked about online and the strategic plan, meaning the idea is that you get a strategic plan, you begin to lay out goals, you have values that are attached to that, and you have both sort of the strategic values as well as your operational values, and that really sets things in motion. Results orientation, in my opinion, is being sure that you look at the strategic plan and start examining things, you know, how it's structured. I thought your job description laid that out very well in tight effect. Budgeting, which is important, there's nothing worse than seeing a strategic plan in the budget than the rest of that strategic plan. It also talks about the city manager's role with the city council, it talks about it with the management team, it talks about it with department directors. So it's addressed well, I think, as the city council, the city manager, half the special, some of the specifics of that will come out. I don't think the specifics necessarily belong to the job description, it's just that it's address, it's acknowledged, it's something that we can work off of, candidates will understand that is defined in the job description. There were some broad organizational themes that caught my eye, and it knows the management team, and I think that when we're talking about larger organizational teams, that ability for not just the city manager to work with pushing ideas back into the organization, it's a management team piece, and there should be expectations with that in terms of the profunctionality cooperation, continuous unity, initiative and collaboration is something that should be robust and demonstrated throughout the organization. There were also different job responsibilities that talked about managerial homicide, cooperation oversight, and that seems good to me as well. I think there may be some modifications that you're looking for to the job description, but I think it's a very strong job description. I read it after talking with council members, and I felt that it kind of resonated with things that I would hear it probably this time. So I guess it would be interesting to know if there are any, if there are any revisions that you're looking for in the job description, but I really just wanted that in job descriptions I'd seen.
Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alston. Thank you, Sharon. I agree, just looking over the town, just looking at the conversation for having direction, I think our community is looking at all, I think this is a very good document. I do, when I think about our materials that we essentially regulate together, we'll have a provision of trips, which is the things that we live on here after hearing what council do for funding, evaluation, accountability, setting up their expectations, et cetera. And then we'll have, you know, a job description part of community, that employment announcement, which is different types of documents, which will, I hope, be a little bit more playful and engaging and inspirational, which doesn't have to be job description. But one of the things I do see is that I think would be really important is, I guess, perhaps two things. One, I think the biggest thing is that we spell out an expectation that people be committed to equity, diversity, and inclusion in their city leadership. But that's not something we put in the employment advertising materials, but that is a day in a day-out expectation that we want them to institutionalize that work. In my opinion, it would be great to have them in their heart of hearts professionally and personally feel that they have a commitment there. That would be one thing I'd look at, and I certainly could work on some recommendations of language, but definitely a commitment to that. And then the second is, I just wonder about the language around, under the section of provisions, so it's the fourth paragraph, and it says, "A primary responsibility of the city manager is to prepare and administer the budget." I wonder, and just thinking strictly about positions, not thinking about people whatsoever, I wonder about the city manager's responsibility to administer and or oversee the budget. You know, typically, they would work with their finance directors to do that preparation. And of course, you know, five years, 10 years, however, however, you know, you may have city manager or finance director with a different skill set, so they'll need to lean on each other to balance each other out. But that was the only other thing that stood out, you know, do we really think the primary responsibility is to prepare and administer, or is it really in the state administration side of things and just the responsibility?
I respond to that comment pertaining to budget responsibility, that I think city manager practitioners vary in their approach to the budget process. I see some processes that check in with the city council, if they're beginning a process and have some discussion and then, you know, work through a finance director and work with department heads. Typically, the recommended budget for the council budget, I'm not sure what it's called, is something that is recommended by the city manager, but there should be a huge acknowledgement of the input and participation by many people, and there should be a strong line of the strategic plan. I felt in reading the description that the latitude is there. I felt in reading the description that the latitude is there. I recognize that people look at processes and, and they, they change. I mean, we, we hear all different types of budgeting. You're, um, traveling, um, into the world of participatory budget, priority-based budgeting, career-based budgeting, I mean, all different things. So my sense is to keep things like that broad, um, but to be very clear that it, it doesn't mean that the budget can't, um, can't be involving input from a lot of people to create it. I, I can't imagine that it does. So that's why that language didn't, um, didn't come first.
Any other thoughts around that discussion or any other items there in regards to the job description? Uh, Councilmember Gregard.
Thank you, President Weld. I just wanted to clarify, um, the 2015 job description that was sent to council in May is presumably unchanged at that point, or am I missing a more recent version?
No, the, I think the one, or go ahead.
I would give it to Kate.
Go ahead, Ms. Klum.
Um, I would give it to 2015 job description.
Okay.
And I believe that it was unchanged because it was a deep, most current.
So to clarify, you're not proposing any changes at this time to that document?
I don't believe that it means, I think the latitude, um, the, the work manager handles things that's been, that's happening are within the job description.
Okay. Um, I, I, I do, I do want to acknowledge the statement in terms of equity and inclusion expectation, um, and, um, council member Emmanuel's comments about maybe having something like that. That, that might be one area where, um, something, you know, um, could be added and possibly something about scope or overarching values. Um, you know, again, to some extent, I would say that those values that you have in your strategic plan cover that. Um, I know that's really important, it's going to be important now and going into the future. Um, maybe that's based on us calling out specifically in the scope, but it'll be on that, I really don't see a, a need to make a change.
Uh, Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Uh, thank you. Um, I think Sharon, for, for your bucking back on that, do you foresee that this is the, the last time that council will be accepting the job description? Or will she present a batch list and we have one more opportunity to say, yep? But I'm thinking, so we could, I mean, hire somebody and hopefully they're with us for a long, you know, a nice, long time, although, you know, it's pretty normal to, you know, have the head position for five or six years. You know, at that point, you'd be an 11-year-old position. So just prop up, I'm making sure that we've got that, that we're on the same page that it's today, today, or we'll be this, maybe that one year.
I think that it's possible to, you know, revisit it one more time, um, and, and we can take a look at that suggestion that they made. But we don't have really large changes or, you know, things that are gonna, are just gonna really change the complexion of the position. So in that regard, I feel, I feel very good. Um, the, the other thing that I would say is that job descriptions do change over time. So you've had a revision that was made in 2012, I was wondering if you want to search when that version was actually created, and then another one in 2015. I think that modifications to job descriptions do occur, but again, there's no good zones. There's really no good zones. So we can bring it back for, for one, um, last approval, but I don't see anything that I can't move to, to really make a change.
Any other comments or discussion around the job description? Councilmember Clint Hammer.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I guess my thought on, uh, uh, the inclusivity, uh, and, um, uh, can't think of the other term, but don't we, as a council, make that part of our strategic goals and values? And the second line there says, "There's strong alignment with the strategic plan, the strategic goals, and the values." Now, I would, I can't imagine that inclusivity, uh, is not ever going, not going to be one of our values. But I can't, I can also, uh, imagine that, uh, there may be reasons to change our strategic plan. Uh, so I don't know that we need to put too many specifics in here and not make it flexible and workable. Uh, so that's just my thought.
Any other comments or discussion around the city manager job description? All right. Doesn't look like there's any other comments, Sharon.
Okay. The, the next slide we're going to get into reflects some of the data that has been collected on salaries. So there are two different slides that I want to take you through, and then at least a recommendation of, of where we might want to be in terms of the brochure and what we advertise in the next one, February. So first of all, um, as I understand it, and this is information that I have received working with the HR director. Um, the current salary that, that I have is $158,787. Um, there is deferred compensation of 3%, which would be $4,764. And there is an annual power allowance, it's $500 a month, $6,000 a year. So I just wanted to, first of all, give at least a reference point on, on where the salary is now. There may be other things that I'm not aware of, but these are really, uh, the big. So there was a survey of Wisconsin communities that the HR director obtained, and, um, there are just various salaries that are recorded for positions. So what I looked at was sort of taking a range of positions to respond from Wake to Kenosha and looking at what the current salaries are. So of these communities, uh, the average population is around 62,836. And we have an average of $159,824 salary. But in looking at these data, in this data, um, there were two cities that I, I really questioned their inclusion. A lot of times, if there are outliers in a compensation study, you, you tend to pull them out. Um, the information that was seen was indicated as not necessarily being accurate. There's issues with the survey. I actually had some information from two years ago on this person's salary, and it was higher than $140 salary. So I don't think that that is an accurate reflection. I'm not sure that how far off it might be, but I, I didn't want to sue the results. The same is true with what's out. Let's see, it has a 60,000 population and 130,000, almost 131,000 worth of salary. So if I were doing a compensation study, those are two salaries I would consider dropping. When I do that, the average comes out to 165,297. So hopefully that explains a little bit of the thinking on why I did that. I'm gonna go through with the, the remaining salary one, and then we can talk about questions or, you know, your thoughts on what we talk about in terms of salary. We also look at current or recent ID and name recruitment. I'm not exactly certain of the day, um, or if an analyst puts this together for me, me something. And so, um, what we have here are just some positions that are, are so uncomfortable. Again, we're trying to work within populations that align with the data that we had from Wisconsin, and this is what we've moved together. And, and so you see amongst these, the average population is about 53,000, an average salary of $164. So that's some of the competition that's out there, and this is likely to change, but it gets you sometimes. You see, I'm concentrating on high salaries. I would probably recommend that we flip out a recommendation that talks about the top two of the just salaries as the low salaries, you take a look at Chaboy. Um, they are not going to pay $158,000 for a city administrator. That is unrealistically low in this market. So that's why I'd rather kind of talk that up to a certain amount and with, with stipulation that it is reflective of their qualifications and experience. One piece of information that the HR director shared with me, there was a compensation study that was, um, done for the city of O'Clary in 2018, and some recommendations expected for. Now, these recommendations were not adopted, but still, I, I think it's one more piece of salary data, and because it's 2018, and we know what type of increases were generally done throughout cities, we're able to make some adjustments then as to what the range would be that were updated for 2020. So you see, um, a maximum salary in 2018 of $168,290. If there were 2.5% increases from 2019 and then to 2020, we would be at $176,704. You know, just kind of keeping that, making sure that the salary is something that helps you attract and retain employees. So then the next slide are just some options for you. Um, I would encourage you to look at this maximum salary of up to 175. Um, it's sort of where I thought they should be, and the, the data aligns fairly well with that. Now, we did see some of the maximum numbers around, um, 165. I'm thinking this is about a 5% to 6% increase over that amount, so it's giving us a little bit of room, a little bit of flexibility. Some other things to consider, I mean, if you could back it down to 173 or 170, I would encourage you to look at nothing lower than 170. I think it would compromise our, our recruitment efforts because people will come in and you may be finding that you're getting people where they, they're just gonna be right at the top, and that makes you can have north of $175,000. But I, I think having that additional room, um, and the reason I'd like to review this right now, this is basically to give some orientation of salary to candidates. It does not connect you to advertising at $175,000 or similar, but you could get somebody who comes at it, and, and maybe there's a reason they, they want to be in the area, and it takes every bit of that to get them here for salary. Um, they, they sometimes get, they respond that if we add up to, depending upon qualifications, and then they're not able to get that. So that's one of the reasons I, I wanted to at least make that point. And then my final, um, comment on salary. Um, people think in terms of salary, other elements of compensation, like you saw on that current package this city manager gave, may include deferred compensation, may include, um, a power allowance, it may include, um, relocation expenses. So there are different things that figure into the search and in the compensation package. But at this point, I will, um, proceed with any questions that you have, and do my best to answer them.
Questions from council. Uh, Councilmember Gregard.
Thank you, President Weld. Sharon, I was wondering a bit about this, this power allowance, the $6,000 a year that is under the current, um, hiring. So did you say that that thing is usually added later in the negotiation, or is that something that typically fit a more upfront, like, or is that just kind of an extra incentive, like, in the negotiation typically?
It's in, it would be part of the negotiation. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put those expectations out there. I will say that one of the things that I have found very helpful in the search, once you have a candidate and you're very interested in employment discussions with that candidate, I'd like to talk with them. I like to go over all sorts of things in terms of vacation and benefits. Vacation is always a significant word, or you may have a, um, a pay, um, what is it? PTO, pay cutoff. You might have your stipulations and vacation combined. There are, there are many different ways of approaching that. I would try to at least follow where people are. Um, healthcare benefits are a big issue for us because we might be okay working with them on a salary, and somebody finds out that, um, the health benefits that they had before, they were getting more money, right? To come to O'Clary and then help, and maybe you're gonna start to lose money. So I think you, you get that information, and you, you bring it back so we can talk about what in all sorts of instances is, um, without, kind of getting tied into things, but looking at that full package. And it's really, it's really easy to have that conversation with, with the candidates and, and have the information and just understand where they are, trying to steer them towards where things are for you. But, um, that's the only answer to your question, something that, that it really is, um, something that will come up later in the negotiations. At least, that'd be my recommendation.
Yeah, but that sounds great to me, on a particular point there.
Uh, Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you. I wanted to voice my support for having a strong salary. On, in simple terms, that way to be for. And if we're going to be serious about making this the maximum recruit, we have to have a salary that's competitive. Um, it's likely that somebody would see the salary decrease, depending on where they're serving, and, uh, then that's up to us, and our good colleague and friend Sharon to help us tell the story that the cost of living is, uh, potentially better in O'Clary, so there is more value to the salary, even if they were to decrease. Uh, I, I think this is, uh, one of the strongest ways that we can say we're serious about attracting you and we're serious about recruiting.
Uh, Councilmember Zhang.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just want to echo the support for a salary that, um, a higher salary, not just to attract good quality candidates, but also as a commitment for us, you know, we, um, continue to have these conversations about providing good pay for folks that live here in O'Clary, and as, um, you know, as a city, we want to be able to show that we are committed to doing that and committed to, um, helping, um, with these stagnant wages that we see here and the increased cost of living. Of course, it's much lower than the metro area, but this is definitely a start. Um, and hopefully that sets the, that also sets around for the city manager to also see how committed we are of making sure that the employees and the families we have here are being taken up to par. are, um, being taken up to par. So just want to say, um, support of that, and we should lead by example.
Any other comments or discussion? Council member Gregard.
Thank you, President Walde. I would agree, like, putting out a, um, like, a 175, like, upfront is, is better. I mean, because, you know, I think it, it just, it attracts, like, a, a good pool of But then maybe later on, we don't need to do some of the other pieces of it in that negotiation, because we, we've covered some of the bases in terms of, of the expectations, um, in terms of compensation and that salary range, so. That's just one, one perspective on it.
Thank you. Sharon, could you just share again your, the range that you would recommend?
I would talk about, I wouldn't put a lower limit on here, um, because the lower limit, actually, I think hurts you. I think I would say a maximum salary up to.
Okay.
175. Would be the way I would propose to put the information up to recruitment brochure.
Okay. Uh, council member Anderson.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I guess this is a question I've been mulling, and I, I made Sharon's perspective. I definitely, um, understand my colleague's position regarding the salaries, that I, I want to also recruit the best possible person. I wonder if there is a conversation, um, actually within recruiting regarding, um, salaries. I think that, um, you know, if there is a, if there is kind of an established standard or even, you know, within states, it's just, it can be very hard, I think, sometimes for people to care of salary when there are so few people in a community who are not making anything close to that salary. So I guess that is what's true, is what your thoughts were regarding kind of a floor getting established for administrative salaries and how communities have responded to that in the past.
That is a really interesting question, because one of the things that I often see in, in compensation, particularly public sector compensation, is that the minimum salaries are often so low that you, you won't attract the people that you're looking for. So if you're looking for somebody who is either considerable or expensive, city managers, you, you won't get them at 120. So I think it's, it's, it's hard to understand at four, this is probably driven a little bit by market. I felt, if I was looking at this from just the office in Wisconsin, you have several other cities with similar populations that were in the mid 170s, and so it, it seemed to me if we went outside of that, it wouldn't be good. For the minimum, um, we can always put a minimum in, but I, I think that really becomes, that really becomes a difficult key. I, I, I don't know that there's a great answer to your question, but, um, just trying to find out the reality of hiring, what often happens with salary.
Thanks. I don't know if other cities have had, um, I don't know, public conversation around this that you're aware of?
You know, it, it generally becomes, how do you attract, how do you retain? And that conversation is typically focusing more towards the top of the salary range, is, is, is what it generally is. I mean, I, I think that if you are lucky, maybe you will get somebody who's a rising star, doesn't have as much experience, but they, they certainly have a lot of promise. Maybe you get that person a little bit lower rate, um, and, you know, I, I think as I'm looking at this, I think, I think your range is probably, um, realistically 150 to 175. I mean, I just, I just kind of, it's just that you, maybe, maybe you'd be lucky to find somebody at 150. I, I tend to think 160 is probably a better number, and then you've got that place between 175 and 160, and I'm, I'm sorry, I can't speak to that, that, um, that floor keeps a little bit better.
No, no, I, I.
I'm embarrassed for sharing.
I have to share it because it's a market, like, they said, like, probably is a little bit just more, um, a philosophical problem that is outside the bounds of the conversation. So, thank you.
I, I also want to comment, but I am a believer, I think it was said earlier this evening, I think it's got what you pay for. So sometimes when people are, are going lower, they, they don't get the people who are going to be innovative and creative. I think, you know, often resonate with, resonate with somebody that has experience, and, and they, they demonstrate that, that type of innovation. So, um, definitely the hard, it's a hard question to answer.
Definitely, and, you know, I, I think ultimately I'm telling this, I, I'm with my colleagues, I'm thinking that we need to look out for the city's best interest in recruiting, whatever we, that we need to.
Uh, council member Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President Walde. Sharon, I, I just, I want to wait, put my voice in here as well. I'm really in favor and supportive of the strategy we're talking about here. It, it's, that's how the game is played. But I did spend a considerable amount of time listening, reading through the, um, survey results, and it sounded like there was, um, a theme of discontent, not so much in the senior, um, leadership, but in the staff who have been, uh, working more and more for less and less over more than 20 years. So to see this salary jump more than $20,000 and not understand ourselves at this table, that we really need to look at that as being, uh, a commitment that we need to make to the employees of the city. If we're going to be, um, setting an example for a city that, um, needs to have wages that are livable, then I, I think we have to look beyond just our leadership. So as we look at the strategy, I think we also have to see that we're going to have to make a commitment to the employees of the city as well.
Uh, council member Zhang, sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, Sharon, I just have a quick question, just about this. How often do you see, uh, city managers being offered, maybe at slightly lower than what we're anticipating, and based on, um, based on their production or their, their annual valuation, that it jumps up to the numbers that we want them to, to look at?
I think that that happens, um, with some, some frequency. It, it kind of goes to the negotiations and how that goes. Of course, when there are the difference where somebody's wanting higher, the city wants to come in lower, there's always that, what are you doing this month? Or, you know, kind of laying out, um, some avenue forward. So those are all pieces that are in the negotiation, so it's kind of sets up that, that framework for us.
Council member Klinkhammer.
Uh, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm s- I'm sorry.
Um, I know you mentioned earlier that there's a possibility, I mean, we might get lucky and get someone at 115, um, but then chances are we'll get better quality if it's higher. And I know that with our strategic plans, and I think it's a lot of results oriented, we've got a lot of stuff that is happening right now, especially in the midst of COVID and everything else that's going on, um, you know, I'm just kind of curious if, if it did end up being a lower, um, that the strategy would, it could revolve around that as far as putting, uh, if you would, a one-year plan together or something like that.
You know, that also got in the negotiations. Um, it's, it's really hard to look at. We are trying to understand the market in Wisconsin. We looked at national numbers together too, to just kind of see how things were aligned up. And, um, I mean, I think this lines up pretty well for you, the, the flexibility that's going to be, how we work up, and one of the questions that we want to ask candidates is what are their salary requirements? A policy within the company, in many states are going to a point where maybe, um, allow a recruiter to access some current salary information. And I think that that really is part of a diversity, a diversity of, of non-determinatory hiring, that, um, certainly people might argue, um, if you're a woman and your salary is 175 or lower, then why, why would you go look at salary that, um, that might be inadmissible? So we can't ask what hires they need, but we can ask what they require. And that sometimes people will be telling us what they require, sometimes, um, those spending work within that, that salary that's listed, so a lot of this really comes a little bit to mind.
Uh, council member Klinkhammer.
Uh, thank you, President Walde. The, I have a couple of questions, Sharon. If I was currently employed city manager, and I'm looking at this and kind of contemplating a move, and I see a maximum of up to 175,000, I'm assuming it's got to come with some, uh, quality experience. Am I looking at that number thinking, all right, now I'm going to get another X amount in deferred income, uh, deferred salary, and a car bonus and other compensation for whatever? Or am I looking at, oh, I'm looking at 175, that's got, that's including everything?
Well, what I would either like to be quite honest, um, I think, and it, it's a pounding the background of the person coming in, um, they may be looking at it and saying what's happened in terms of deferred income and how to deal. What I would try to do on something like that is work with them on all of the economics. I thought about whether or not it would be good to talk in terms of total compensation package, but the variable in there is, is the healthcare benefit, how those get crossed out. I mean, what, what goes into that, what, what, what does and becomes kind of difficult? Um, there's also the pension piece. As I recall, it's a contribution, if there's a contribution, I don't remember what the amount of it is, but some like years ago, when employees didn't contribute, now they contribute to their contribution.
Okay.
All of those things really, really kind of add, add up, but the big one is salary. And I think that, um, there's a way to talk with people about, about what's there and keep this, and keep this realistic, um, but you're quite a good pick.
Okay, uh, all right. Couple of other points. One, uh, I'm not worried about what other senior staff are going to think about, uh, this, if we have to go to 175 or more, uh, because they're going to see that as an opportunity for them to make more, because otherwise, uh, I went through this at one point with so much compression and, uh, senior staff approaching the salary of the city manager that we could not offer them more, because it would be paying them so much, so close to what the city manager was making, that, uh, it was a problem. So finding a quality person and paying them well is not an issue. That's not a problem. Uh, I, and we're paying almost 170 now, so let's go for it.
If anyone has the flexibility, if somebody's coming in, um, if they want to be a 173 let's say, and they're really looking for a car loan, does, does that work? I mean, you just kind of, you just kind of, you just kind of look at that and kind of, kind of side it up, but you do it when you know the person, and you can, you can think about what's important to them and how you can get them on board. I prefer to have negotiations, really, you know, have, have a, let them feel appreciated as they're coming on board, that it's a good opportunity. And I think the sweet spot is, is getting to that point where they're feeling pretty appreciated, but not going over, where you're not sure you're appreciating your actions. Those are the things that we have to play up for.
Uh, council member Lor.
Thank you, President Walde. Hi, Sharon. I just want, when we talk about increasing, uh, almost 20,000 from the current city manager to the new one that we are looking to, uh, hire, how do we justify that the person, the previous, uh, Mr. Peters have so much experience, and we pay him that, um, less than $160,000? And now we jump into some, 175, and how do we, you know, justify that? So the community that in this community would be saying, yeah, why we pay low now and we're looking for the next person, that we don't really know that he have the ability or the qualification that Mr. Peter have, and that why we offer to pay higher? Can, can you give a little more detail on that part, so I can, I, I like to explore more, but at the same time, I want to, want to make sure that I be able to justify that, because we have, uh, senior people who are in this, um, working on this organization that we need to, uh, justify that too. Thank you.
Well, you know, to, to some extent, um, the one, the one slide, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to quote, yeah, the one, um, this becomes an interesting slide. This was, this was something that, um, the council in, in 2018 decided not to go forward with the study. And what's, what's interesting here is, I look at this, and I would ask questions about whether or not the compensation practices have checked up with the market for a few long time. I'm only familiar with the city manager's salary and not with other salaries and, and other, other structures. So when I, when I look at this, if you fall behind, you often run into that situation where you're going into the market, you have to come up to the market. And I don't know if that works with the justification, it's more what, what happens with candidates. Had you approved that salary range, had you had the same percentage of adjustment that we did in 2019 and 2020, you're right out for what I'm suggesting is that maximum salary. I will say, as I've gone through some of the materials, this has not been a council concern, but the chief department has mentioned, and I think it was also present in some of the employee survey comments about compensation. And, um, you know, it, compensation, compensation is tough, because typically, if you don't keep up, at some point you begin to lose people, or you start finding that you're bringing in new staff with less experience, but they're coming in at the, at the same rate of pace, that's compression. So I, I think, I think it's hard to kind of look at this and, and think about it. On one hand, you can see that, and everything was put together, Mr. Peters wasn't too far off of the 2018, um, the, the 2020. And I'm sorry, I think the 2020 maximum, you were at those 176,704, which is, when, you know, you're on the 2020 range, I think. So I don't know if that's starting to get, that discussion is starting to go, I think, in answer towards your, your question. I mean, I think it's maybe, maybe past decision somewhere in the unemployment market is that it is coming up, but I would also bring out, we're not talking about something particularly different, so what's there in a total competition?
I have a second question. Council member Lor. Councilmember Lar.
Thank you, President Weld. The the reason, Sharon, the reason I ask that question, because when I look at the population that we're serving, um, the uh Racine, Kenosha, um, there's a hundred, 104, uh, thousand people that we only offer 174, 63. And we, I'm looking for the closer to Racine. That is only 103 years on the job and only offer 140,000 dollars. And uh, I'm also looking at the Sheboygan that her population less, but 150,000 are starting, and they have been on the job for um three years. And that's why I say that it seemed to be like, for me personally, opinions seem to be like, we're starting too high on the uh offer, the salary for the new city manager search. That's from my opinion, so that's uh, that's why I bring up this question for you, you know?
Yeah, I'm not sure there's anything that that I can can really add from the information that I presented. I appreciate during your talk.
Any other comments or questions or discussion in regards to the salary survey? Do we want to put forward a proposal then that would be considered for the city manager search now? Or a discussion in that regard?
Um, I am okay with um proposing this to you. Uh, you didn't see the information in um, you know, before we met today. And I I think I'm uncomfortable with what I've heard. I would propose to write the brochure and include other stuff like that. But, you know, you have time as a council to reflect on on that now, and if that's the approach you'd like to take. This is just pretending something, salary is probably one of the more difficult pieces. And so it's really good to to work like this, to reserve some information to think about it. Um, and if there's something that might be a little bit, if you pay final for recruitment brochure, can you change?
Sure. Councilmember Klinkhammer.
I'm, for one, I'm very comfortable with the uh, including the statement, the maximum salary up to 175,000 dollars. It doesn't say, uh, I I think any quality individual that looks at that number and looks at the opportunity in this city, they're going to say, all right, they're serious about this, let's, let's find out more. And let's, and we can talk about that. Uh, I don't think that they're, would seriously think that that's etched in stone, uh, that they wouldn't ask for more if they wanted or felt they deserved more. And I don't think we wouldn't consider more if we wanted that individual. So uh, let's give ourselves the best opportunity to attract a quality person, so.
Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you so much, and I want to look up um what councilmember Klinkhammer chose, so thank you for that. One of the pieces that maybe our HR director could help counsel with or agree with is just the insurance that the business changes, that, you know, uh, several thousand dollar change, and that we can operationally work through that. Um, we'll start talking about operational budget pretty soon. And especially for 2021, we hope that we have a new city manager by next, not sooner. And so just, uh, I don't know, one or two sentences, you know, from the finance director or from the HR director up. Yes, the council has said to go through this, and if the final adoption will make it work, something like that. Just to make sure we're not um getting ourselves into um, uh, an active virus angle.
Any other thoughts? So are we comfortable at least allowing us time to to verify with with staff that that this is a number that is affordable to us? Um, but at the same time, moving forward with the up to 175,000?
I am absolutely fine with that because while staff is looking at those those numbers and considering that, I will be working on um the real recruitment brochure that I can show you. So
Okay.
While they're working on that, I'll be getting a recruitment brochure. The council is fine with that approach. I can tell you it does, it does work well for me.
Okay. Any objections? Councilmember Lar.
Let me clarify first, um, thanks, President Weld. Um, these questions might probably ask with council, uh, Klinkhammer. Um, you mentioned that two 175,000 dollar, I mean, include everything that had been offered previously with the council, uh, the city manager, Peter, or 175 on, and these also allowing on top of that?
It isn't specified. We can approach it from any position that we want, depending on the individual and what they're requesting. Uh, it may mean includes all the extra bonuses, it may not. Uh, it, it's just a number that initiates a conversation about, all right, what's my compensation going to be? And what's it going to include, etc.? It does not, it, it doesn't obligate us uh to include it or not to include it. It's, it gives us flexibility.
There would still be that, the negotiation part of the, of the process. Are we good moving forward as we discussed?
Yes.
I not seeing any objections, so sure, we can keep moving.
I appreciate everyone's consideration and and comments this evening that's as helpful as we can forward.
So what's next?
We give the brochure to you. Um, I would expect to get it to you early next week, but we're just going to go forward with a a full brochure for you and and show you whether it all looks like. So we can get started if you approve the brochure.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion from council? Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you. I just wrote quick, wanted to um ask Sharon, do you have copies of our other brochures, including our recent police chief brochure? I think they did a very nice job, and maybe there's some papers that you could borrow for things of interest.
That's all, what's the goal to me? I will definitely um um reach to Victoria and see if she can provide that to you.
Okay, and then one last thing. Our city administration office put together our website when we did the city manager survey and uh, of the engagement survey. And one of the staff members there also put together digital reports on that website. So this is another thing for you to finance creation.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much.
Any other comments? Mr. Gray, uh, councilmember Gregard.
Thank you. Just wanted, I think I'm not totally familiar with uh, you know, all the elements of the brochure. And obviously, it sounds like we'll have to deal with this stuff at our, at our next work session. Is it typically something that's printed off, like in physical format? And then also is like a PDF that is like posted online? Or is there like a variety of different options?
We do the majority of it um online. I would say most of the communication, I'm going to say over 90%, occurs in that way. So it's nice to have something that is in a printable format. So we can also, we're doing something for you like that. We're setting it up so it's understandable, sometimes it's just probably be set up. So I can definitely work on that for you, so that you have some flexibility.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Clump, thank you very much for all your, your work on this and leading us through this next, this first phase. And we'll look forward to uh, to your brochure and and uh, and comments in the next week or so, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Council, any questions before we say goodnight? All right, guys, thank you very much, have a great evening.
Good night.
Say goodnight, Greg.